This is the Emeryville Proposed City Charter, Charter City and Transfer Tax. Karen.
Yes. I have this new mouse which is...
Who will be in two places at once.
Yes. Okay, great. So, um...
One page.
Oh, wait, wrong one, sorry.
Just did that.
I can see for distance, or I can see closer. So, the presentation I'm about to do tonight is for the both of the two proposed ballot measures that the city will be considering to place in the November 4th ballot. They are related, but there are a set of resolutions for each of the ballot measures. So, what we are asking the council to consider tonight is placing two proposed city chart, two city, sorry, two city ballot measures on the ballot. As, one would be a city charter, and the other one would be a real property transfer ballot measure. So, the recommended council actions are that the council adopt, really, it's four reservations, four resolutions each per measure. The first resolution for each measure actually places the measure on the ballot, and this is required if the council so chooses to place one or both of the ballot measures on the ballot. The next three are optional, but in the past, these are things that the council has also directed staff to do. And the first is to set priorities for filing ballot arguments and direct the city attorney to prepare an impartial analysis for each measure. So, there are two resolutions, one for each for that. Also, resolutions providing for the filing of rebuttal arguments for each ballot measure. This is also optional. And last, resolutions releasing the rebuttal arguments for each ballot measure. And what this is, is that while the city council has the first opportunity to not just author, if they so choose, the ballot arguments, bless you, but also the rebuttal arguments if there is any opposition measures to the arguments, they can also choose to essentially sign over the ability to do that to somebody that they specify, perhaps a community member or somebody else. This is something in the past that the council has been interested in doing. So, we have resolutions for each ballot measure that would allow the council to do that if we so choose. So, for some of you, this will be repetitive, but given the kind of historic steps that the council will be considering, we've prepared kind of a presentation that will give those in the audience at home who are not completely up to date, a brief overview of what is in front of the council to consider tonight. So, I'll start with the proposed city charter. So, how is a city charter adopted? A city charter is adopted if a majority of voters approve of a charter in an election. The council can either draft a charter and place it on the ballot, or can charge a charter commission to do so. Also, a citizens group can initiate the drawing of a city charter through a ballot initiative by forming a charter commission. In this case, the city council directed staff to draft language and went through a process of opening up consideration of the draft language to the public for review before proceeding. A city charter can only be amended by a majority of voters, with amendments can be proposed by the council and put on the ballot, or again, through ballot initiative. And there's a different, for most ballot measures, only 10% of the registered voters have to sign the petition to put it on the ballot, but for a charter amendment, it's a higher order, and that is 15%. So, reasons to adopt a city charter, and it's part of this, I'll say what a city charter is. The Emeryville right now is ruled by general law, which is that our municipal affairs, such as how to conduct elections, the form of government, the number of council members, the ability to, the restrictions on the type of tax that can be enacted, those are all governed by city law. Charter cities, like those around us, whether it be Alameda, or Albany, or Berkeley, Oakland, Piedmont, they have the ability to self-govern when it comes to those issues of municipal affairs. And so, as many of the reasons that cities choose to do charters is that charter cities can address issues, conditions, or needs that cannot be met adequately by state general law. And it could also remove the restraints of general law related to public campaign financing, self-governance, and contracting if the citizenry or the council so chooses. And it also allows the adoption of a local property transfer tax, subject to voter approval. But even with voter approval, a general law city cannot adopt a real estate property transfer tax. So, the specific charter process that the Emeryville City Council has undergone to date. On March 18th, the city council directed staff to initiate the steps to place a proposed Emeryville City Charter, as well as a real property transfer tax on the November 4th ballot. On May 9th, there was a public notice of the city's intention to consider placing the city charter on the November ballot. This is a state requirement. Twenty-one days after that, there was a, the first of two required public hearings regarding the public's thoughts regarding becoming a charter city, as well on the content of the charter itself. The, July 16th, there was a second of the two required city charter public hearings. August 6th, council will be considering to take actions on whether to place both the charter city, the city charter and the transfer tax on the ballot. And then this Friday is the last date for submitting resolutions for any ballot measures to the register of voters for placement on the ballot. So, Emeryville's proposed city charter, which was what staff directed to be prepared by staff, and what seemed to be at least affirmed by those of the public who came and spoke at the two public hearings, is a very simple city charter. And there's several articles in the charter, but basically, the summary of Emeryville City Charter is that Emeryville City Charter provides the city council with the ability to adopt a real property transfer tax with the approval of the voter. But otherwise, the power of the city under this charter are the same powers as exist currently under general law. So, for any other powers other than the city charter, charter power of being able to impose a real property transactions tax, there would have to be a city charter amendment that was approved by the voters, whether it was city council initiated or initiated by the citizens. So, the proposed city charter is about two pages, and essentially, the first article just establishes what the city's name and boundaries are, which are the same as they are now. The second article describes the city charter, as I said, that it's the same essentially, as, it's the same as now in terms of following general law, with the exception of relating to taxation and assessment subject to voter approval. And essentially, that would give the city council, if the voters approved a ballot measure for a transfer tax, to in fact, adopt that tax. The third just says that kind of all of the property rights, rights of action, contracts, ordinances, resolutions, regulations, or legal proceedings that are currently in play with the city being a general law would continue to be the same under being a city charter. And essentially, that the form of government is the council manager form of government that currently exists today, with the same number of five council members elected at large, the council's role would change. And something that's required under state law is to address the issue of council compensation, and that would stay the same as exists under general law, with restraints in terms of what that can be according to the state. So, the recommended city charter ballot question is again, something that has been brought to the council before, and essentially, what would be placed on the ballot is the following. "To enhance local control over funding essential city services, shall the city of Emeryville Charter be adopted to establish Emeryville as a charter city with the ability to adopt a local real property transfer tax, subject to voter approval. The city council's powers otherwise remain unchanged and are limited by state general law, and any other powers as a charter city would have to be approved by the voters." So, this would be placed on the ballot. In addition, there would be a full text of the proposed charter included in the sample ballot that goes to all the voters. So, in addition, council directed staff to take the steps for the council to consider tonight placing a real property transfer tax on the ballot. As mentioned before, only charter cities can consider a transfer tax, and so, these two are really coupled. So, if, for example, the city charter passed, but the real transfer tax did not, the city would become a city, a charter city, but nothing would have changed, with the possibility of future amendments, you know, by initiative, or by council going to the voters. However, if the transfer tax passed, but for some reason, the city council taxed, the city council, the charter measure did not, in fact, the transfer tax would not either, because the council would not have the authority to impose the tax as a general law city. And if you look at the resolution regarding the transfer tax, there was a where, there was a slight amendment that was provided to you that made that clear.
It's the, it's on the last page, it's on the fourth page of that resolution that is, puts this measure to the voters, and it's the very first, further resolved on the last page of that resolution.
It just clarifies that, you know, that it would not essentially take effect if the council does not, if the city is not, does not become a charter city. So, the proposed real property transfer tax would, is proposed to be, if approved by the voters, to be $12 per $1,000 of property sale value imposed as a one-time tax at the time of sale, and this tax may be split between the buyer and the seller. There is an exemption for residents sold under the city's affordable housing program, and that those, those are those that are restricted by the ownership, 30-year ownership covenants that set aside these units for persons or families of low or moderate income. And the proposed effective date is 10 days after the election is certified by the city council, or January 1st, 2015, whichever is later. Which is like, and in the past, the, whoops, sorry. Yeah. Whoops. Sorry about that. In the past, the council tends to be able to certify the elections in the first meeting of December. So, this is not as clear as I would like, but to give us a comparison of what the rate would be for some perhaps typical property sales, that $12 per 1,000, a $30,000 property would pay at the time of sale, the one-time tax of $3,600. $10 million property, more likely a commercial property in Emeryville, rather than a residential property, would pay $120,000, and a...
$12,000.
Sorry, 12, sorry, 12...
A million dollar property, right?
A million, no, I was going, well, I was going, jumping to the 2 million, but right, a $1 million property would pay $12,000. A $10 million property would pay $120,000, and a $100 million property would pay $1.2 million, one-time monthly. To look at where the proposed rate of $12 is compared to other charter cities, and every charter city in Alameda County has a local property transfer tax, it put us lower than our surrounding towns of Berkeley and Oakland, in the same as Alameda. So, just to get a sense of the difference, currently, under general law, the only property transfer tax that is imposed is through the state and the county, with the county receiving half of those proceeds. And the tax is $1.10 per $1,000, and the city receives 55 cents of that, while the county receives the other 55 cents of that. And as I said, currently, we do not have a local property tax. So, to give you some sense of some fairly recent properties, with, for example, the fairly recent transaction when Novartis sold some of its properties, the city received a bit less than $62,000 under the current state-county imposed transfer tax. If in fact, the, the proposed $12 per 1,000 rate had been in place, the city would have gained more than $1.35 million. And you can see kind of the difference. Perhaps one of the biggest differences is when the tower sold a couple of years ago, that the city received about $75,000, with the council receiving $75,000. And if the $12 per 1,000 sale value had been in place, the city would have, have, have done quite a bit more. So, just some projected revenue comparisons, and I did a range of years, so I will just give you a sense of the lowest and the highest year. So, current, so what the city received at getting that 55 cents per 1,000, in 2010, which was kind of the height of the, of the property sale kind of bust or low, reductions, the city received just under $39,000 from the sale of those transactions. With the proposed local transfer tax, that would have been almost $850,000. And in a year where there was particularly a lot of commercial activity, 2011 is the year that the tower sold, rather than $616,000, the city would have received almost $13.5 million. For 2014, the current year, we have data through May 2014, currently, the city, through May 2014, the city was able to collect $136,000 if the property transfer tax had been in place, it would have been almost $3 million. And these are funds that are, that other city, that the other, that, you know, that the local property transfer tax is something that the other, of course, charter cities have. So, if the council decides to do the same set of measures, or at least the first measure to place it on the ballot, this is the recommended property transfer ballot question. "To ensure funding to maintain essential city services, such as police, fire, and emergency service protection, street sewer and storm drain maintenance, park and open space development, and maintenance bike and pedestrian safety, childcare and programs for youth and seniors, shall the city of Emeryville adopt a real property transfer tax paid only by buyers and sellers of property at the time of sale, with all funds benefiting Emeryville." And there would be, in addition to the full text of the proposed property transfer tax ordinance, also a summary, in addition to the impartial city attorney analysis, if the council so directs the city attorney to prepare one. So, assuming that the city council goes ahead and moves to place both of the proposed measures on the ballot, the next step would be tomorrow, it's required by the state to be the next day after this happens, there'd be a public notice regarding, public notice regarding the ballot argument and rebuttal argument, assuming that the council passes those resolutions to make that part of the ballot, sample ballot. August 8th is the last date that ballot measures can be submitted to the register of voters, and some of that has to be done in person. So, not a lot, it's, will be, we've done that before, so we can do it again. If the council decides that there shall be ballot arguments included in the sample ballot for the voters to, to consider, the resolution, the draft resolution in front of you sets that time is August 13th, or a week after the ballot measure is taken to the register of voters. And the public notice, I should say, regarding the argument and rebuttal argument would be posted on our three city bulletin boards, as well as we will put it on our city homepage. If the council decides to also have rebuttal arguments as part of the sample ballot, that due date would be August 20th, given seven days after the ballot arguments to be submitted for rebuttal, for any authors of rebuttals to be able to view the ballot arguments and submit a rebuttal. And then, August 25th is the absolute last day that ballot arguments and/or rebuttal arguments can be submitted to the register of voters, so they could be included. City Clerk's Office plans to do that on Friday, the 22nd, just to make sure that if there's any last-minute issues, that we've got some time to make sure that everything is correct. Then also, once before Election Day, the city has to publish a public notice regarding the measures that were placed on the ballot. We tend to do that in September, so it's done. And then, of course, November 4th is Election Day. So, that ends the presentation, and as I said, there are really eight resolutions for each of the measures, and so I will run back to my desk and...
Get ready.
...try to hear what the motions, if any, and the vote is regarding any of those proposed resolutions.
Okay, let's go ahead.
Anyone has any questions?
I have a quick clarifying question, actually, and it's on the real property transfer tax ballot question. And my question, or my comment is that it doesn't include the rate itself on the question. And I'm just curious why that is. I was surprised to see that it doesn't say how much it would be.
It's included in both the, the ordinance summary, proposed ordinance summary, and of course, the full text of the tax measure, of the tax, of the proposed tax ordinance, that will also be included in the sample ballot and sent to all the voters.
Is anyone else surprised that the rate's not in the question?
I guess I am too. I think it'd be probably a good idea if we put the rate in there.
No.
I don't know if it's a good idea, I just was surprised.
It's not necessary, is it?
Yeah, and I think part of the reason, this was the exact question that we polled, and we didn't include the rate in the poll, because at the time, we were looking at, you know, different rates and different tiers and different exemptions, so we just pulled this language here, and our, the recommendation that, of the pollster when they came here was to just leave it as is.
Okay, I'm fine with that, I just wanted to make sure that we were eyes wide open. I have one other clarifying question, which has to do actually with Exhibit A, which is the text of the ordinance, sorry, of the code itself around the real property transfer tax. And it's on, in our packet, it's on page 628, I believe. It talks about the effective date, I guess it's section...
Right.
What section is it?
Section 2.
Section 2, thank you. And I, I was confused when I read it, because it says the later of these two, and I thought we had intended it to be the earlier of those two. Can someone answer that for me?
Well, it, it has to be the later of, of those.
Of the what?
It has to be the, because you were, we were talking about, at the time, you know, if the, if the results came to the council on December 2nd, then it becomes effective 10 days thereafter, so it's December 12th. And then, we were talking about just having a, sort of a hard and fast date of January 1.
The public understands, yeah.
The, it has to read as the later of, in case you actually don't get your results until, let's say you don't get your results until January. Granted, that's probably not going to happen. So, you would have an ordinance that says it's going to, if you said earlier, it'd be January 1, 2015.
And it hasn't yet taken...
And, and you're now going earlier than what's even allowed by the Elections Code.
Oh, I see.
So, this is, it's saying the later of, so, with the idea that we had actually, probably will get the results to have you certify them on December 2nd, if that's the correct date, I'm recalling.
Yeah. Well, that wasn't my intention, I guess.
True.
So, I don't know if we want to change that date from January 1st to something earlier?
Or you, well, the, you have to come, at least comply with the Elections Code, which says, you know, 10 days after you actually certify the results.
Right, but if we're doing later, we could do December 10, or as provided by the California Elections Code section, so that...
I thought we were just going to say something general like that, like as provided by the Elections Code.
Well, some of us wanted an actual date, because most people don't know what is provided by the California Elections Code, section 9217, and I thought it was helpful to have an actual date, so that people can predict, you know, there's certainty that it will, but there's still not certainty, it sounds like, because we have to abide by that.
Yeah, because we just, I mean, I think we all suspect that we would actually get the results on December 2nd, but if that's the case, the way this currently reads, it wouldn't go into effect until January 1.
Won't take effect until January 1. Okay. Well, that wasn't my intention, so I just want to put that out for the council and see if we want to do something different.
I thought we settled on the earlier.
Well, that's what we thought, but it makes sense that you couldn't do it on January 1st if it still hadn't been certified.
Right.
It's okay the way it is.
Okay. Okay, it's a minor detail, it just is different than what I think we anticipated.
Can we hear from the public?
Anyone want to comment on this item? Please come forward.
Okay, there's something in here that I think is wrong, and you need to fix it. The measure to be submitted to the voters, and this is the, the second, the second wording, "to ensure funding to maintain essential city services such as fireplace," that wording, that text, at the very bottom out, there's something that's incorrect, and it's, could be problematic legally, I think. Okay, dot, 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 "real property transfer tax paid only by buyers and sellers of property at the time of sale, with all funds benefiting Emeryville?" Question mark. I believe that should say, dot, 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 "real property transfer tax paid only by buyers and/or sellers of property at the time of sale, with all funds benefiting Emeryville?" Question mark. It should say "and/or," because there's no, that's a private agreement between the buyer and the seller. They, they could have a private, private agreement where the seller pays all of it, or the buyer pays all of it, or they split it 50/50, or they split it 75/25. So, that's not germane, and the way it sounds like now, it must be paid by, the buyers and sellers have to at least kick in some, and it's sort of ambiguous. I think it should just say "and/or," I think you should put that language in, I think you should ask the city attorney about that and put that language in there. I don't know how that could be legally problematic, but I think it's more, it's more clear. Once again, I'll say I think we should be charging what our neighbors charge, $15 per thousand, thousand, per thousand dollars, thousand square feet, because that's what our neighbors get, and this, this notion that we should always charge less than our neighbors is wrong, I think. I think we should just charge what the market will bear, that's the only rational metric. And this, what you're doing is you're applying a different logic, or different metric that has a dubious logic, it's, that we always have to charge less, and it's sort of a race to the bottom, and sort of, first off, it's, it's bad regionally, it makes Berkeley and Oakland, presumably, so they're going to lose business at our expense. I mean, I mean, we'll gain at their expense, I should say. And I just, I don't, I don't think we should be thinking more regional, I just think we should charge what the market will bear, and I think clearly, the market will bear 15, since that's what our two next-door neighbors that actually touch us get. Now, I wanted to talk about something different altogether, the schools, the agreement that the schools has with Turner. There's a thing called the Community Benefits Agreement. I'm changing the subject now. Community benefits agreement that the schools have with Turner. That is not a community benefits agreement. If you look it up in the dictionary, a community benefits agreement is between the community and the developer, with the government out of the picture. And the reason why I'm bringing this up is because it cheapens, it's, it's a co-opting of this term, and I don't, I don't appreciate that. I think that community benefits have real value, and this is a co-opting and a devaluing of the idea of a community benefits agreement, and it, plus it gives phony, I think, credibility to the school district, it makes it seem as if the project is more, has more credibility than it really does have. It's, it's sort of glomming on to the idea of CBAs, and I don't appreciate it, I don't think we should be, it should be called a CBA. Because strictly defined, it is not a CBA. Is that my time?
That's your time, thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else on this item? Mr. Carpio?
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen, my name is Andre Carpio. And I look at the tax, transfer tax, and I do not know if there is any exception attached to it, or if any exception has been amended to it. It's not been clear to me. And also, I'm questioning the 1.2%, is it from the... Is it from the actuary or is it arbitrary? Who decided that? I mean, do we have to have 12%? Some, I mean, do we have to have 1.2%? I don't know what was the basis for that. Everybody needs money, I'm sure. But I was wondering if some older citizens will not be in a bind when they want to transfer taxes, because, of course, they haven't made any profit on it since all those years that they have had their property, and they have been keeping taxes, and all of a sudden, they sell it, and they may not be able to have the best price of it, and still they have to have a tax to be paid. And there is several questions about that, because I'm being skeptical that all the 1.2% has been arrived, and I really like to see a detail of the reasoning behind it. Thank you.
It's 12%, Mr. Carpio.
It's actually .12, .012%.
Yeah.
Just so that it's...
For $1,000.
For $1,000, yeah.
Thank you. Thank you, Mayor Asher and Councilmembers. Bob Cantor with the Emoryville Chamber of Commerce. As I mentioned previously, we had a Chamber Board of Directors meeting yesterday, and we had a presentation and discussion on both of these issues. And I think you'll be glad to know that our Chamber Board, we also had a little task force that reviewed it, and our Chamber Board of Directors voted unanimously to endorse both the city charter measure and the real estate transfer tax measure. That's official, so you can use the Chamber of Commerce's name in any argument for. I don't, we will have a formal statement on both. They don't have it yet, because our meeting was just yesterday, I haven't written it, but we will have a formal statement in support, and we'll post it on our website, our Facebook page. But it is now an official position of the Chamber, that we support both. And while it's not on the agenda for tonight, but just as a point of interest, Vice Mayor Atkins came to our meeting as well, made an excellent presentation on the proposed Alameda County sales tax, both extension and increase measure. And you'll be glad to know that, at least in part because of her very persuasive presentation, the Chamber Board also voted unanimously to support that. It's prospectively measure BB. I don't think that's official yet, but we voted to support that as well. So, we will be working to support that and publicize that, and we'll take some things to our pack to see about funding, that'll go to our political action committee. But we are on board in all three. These two measures, plus Measure BB.
Thank you, Bob. Anyone else? Questions from council?
I'd move the four city charter measures, but I'd like a separate vote on each resolution.
I'd second that.
Give me a second.
And/or language?
I'm sorry?
And/or language?
I'm not worried about the and/or.
I'd just like to ask the city attorney to respond to that.
If, the most important piece is the actual ordinance itself, that is, you know, that the voters are voting upon. That said, I will point you to Section 3-3.704, which reads, the title is "Person on Whom Tax Imposed: Any Persons Who Make a Transfer Which Is Subject to the Tax Imposed Under Section 3-3.702, and Any Persons To Whom Such a Transfer Is Made," so that's a buyer and the seller, "shall be jointly and severably liable for payment of the tax imposed." So, I don't think the language is necessarily in the ballot question is inconsistent at all with the actual application of the tax.
Okay.
Thank you. Thank you for raising that concern, though, too.
Call a question?
Okay.
I just wanted to respond, actually, to another public comment, which is about exemptions and/or exceptions. And I asked staff about that as well. It was raised also by email to me in a comment. But I don't, I haven't seen other examples of senior exceptions or exemptions on property transfer taxes, and neither had staff. And I understand how paying a tax at any time can be a hardship on some folks, and yet, this is at the time of a sale of property, and so there are lots of other fees, et cetera. And how we arrived at our fee is really a regional kind of context, I would say, or that's at least my perspective on it. So, we did consider other exceptions and different rates for different amounts, and decided to stick with the simplest possible, which was a $12 per 1,000, which is a .012% property transfer tax.
We'll call that, yeah.
So, the first resolution is ordering the submission to the qualified electors of the City of Emeryville, a measure to approve the City of Emeryville Charter at the general election, to be held Tuesday, November 4th, 2014, as called by Resolution Number 1462. And that was previously done, and that was actually calling the election for the city council elections, and requesting that the County of Alameda consolidate Emeryville's election with the rest of the statewide ballot. And so, my understanding, it's a motion by Councilmember Davis, seconded by Councilmember Brinkman.
Yes.
And so, Councilmember Asher, oh, sorry, Councilmember Brinkman.
Aye.
Councilmember Davis.
Aye.
Councilmember West.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Atkins.
Aye.
And Mayor Asher.
Aye.
The second resolution is optional, but it's to set priorities for filing written arguments regarding the city measure to approve the Emeryville Charter, and directs the city attorney to prepare an impartial analysis to be submitted at the November 4th municipal election. Councilmember Brinkman.
Aye.
Councilmember Davis.
Aye.
Councilmember West.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Atkins.
Aye.
And Mayor Asher.
Aye.
The third resolution is a resolution providing for the filing of rebuttal arguments regarding approval of the City of Emeryville Charter. Councilmember Brinkman.
Aye.
Councilmember Davis.
Aye.
Councilmember West.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Atkins.
Aye.
And Mayor Asher.
Aye.
The fourth resolution regarding placing the city charter in the ballot is a resolution releasing rebuttal arguments on a city measure to approve. And this would give the council members the option of having other members, other, other authors, other themselves of rebuttals to any arguments placed opposing the city charter. And Councilmember Brinkman.
Aye.
Councilmember Davis.
Aye.
Councilmember West.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Atkins.
Aye.
And Mayor Asher.
Aye.
Move the four property transfer tax resolutions.
Okay.
Second that.
Okay, and I just want to let you know that you do not have to say who you're releasing to at this point, but you will have to give me those names as part of submitting the rebuttal, who you've released those names to. And you each have to individually do it.
Can I just ask, since I'm not as familiar with that? That means if we don't, for any reason, want to have our name on it, we don't have to release it to anyone, either?
It's more, it...
It's the opportunity to release it.
It's the opportunity to list, otherwise, it would be the city council members signing the ballot argument. If there is a argument against the city charter, then it's also the city council authoring and signing the rebuttal. What this gives the opportunity, which has happened in the past, that you may have community members that you would like to sign the rebuttal, you're still going to be, you know, in the pamphlet, having signed, being the primary authors of the argument, but it broadens the number of people who, you know, who are, you know, taking a position regarding the measure.
But you were not forced to do either.
You're not forced to do it.
Right, okay.
Pardon me. What do you want from the council here in terms of names of people to sign?
Well, so, for example, if you choose to have Joe Smith of the community, who you feel would be a good person to sign the rebuttal argument to show...
Broad support.
Broad support. You could not sign, you would be a signer of the argument, but you would say, instead of me, Nora Davis, signing the rebuttal, I am ceding that to a specific person that would be signing it.
Well, we're on a very tight time schedule here. When do you need those names?
When, when, the arguments are due August 13th, and the rebuttal arguments are due August 20th, and I would need those names when you submitted the rebuttal argument on August 20th.
There's an actual form that has to be filed with the city clerk, and she, the city clerk has those in her office.
Is there something that we could resolve here, as we're all sitting here? Is there anyone here who wouldn't allow their name to be on the ballot, on the rebuttal argument? Or, let me do it a different way. Is there anybody here who would allow their name to be used? I would volunteer my name.
Yes, I would be fine with that. I think it's a little confusing, because we can't talk to each other outside of our public meetings.
How do we arrange?
So, yeah, how, how do we have that conversation? Are we allowed to have that conversation here, so that...
Why can't we do it right now?
We can plan it.
You say you would use your name. Kurt, what do you say? Jennifer, Ruth? You've got five names to pick from. Moving along.
Well, the issue, though, is what the actual argument says, right? If we're going to sign our names to something, it would be good to know what it says, so who authors that, et cetera? How do we arrange it?
I think usually it's a subcommittee of the council could do that.
Yeah, but what this whole item is about is giving you the authority to release the ability to be, you know, the author of the rebuttal argument to somebody else beside yourself. So, it's, you're just giving yourself that authority. You don't have to actually exercise it, so, you know, there really isn't a need to sort of engage in any sort of discussion about whether you're going to release it or not right now. It's up to you to decide at some point.
But how can we have that conversation? We're not allowed to have those conversations.
We're never allowed to talk.
You're voting right now to give yourself individually that authority to do it. You don't need to have a, necessarily, a conversation about whether you're going to release...
Well, maybe after we're done with this, could I ask publicly how we otherwise orchestrate ballot arguments?
And who specifically is going to write this rebuttal argument?
That's, that's part of it, yeah.
City manager?
No, she can't.
Usually, it's two members of the city council who form a subcommittee.
You're a word, Smith. You're good.
Yeah, I agree with that.
Yeah. Okay, Ruth?
I'm going to be on vacation, so...
How about Ruth and Jennifer as a subcommittee?
There's one of two ways that it's usually done. One is a subcommittee of the council is formed, and they have the authority to both draft the, draft the argument and rebuttals, and to seek others in the community, if they see fit, to actually put their names to the rebuttal, so you have both council members, as well as other members of the community, listed on the sample ballot. The other way of doing it, which is with or without a subcommittee of the council, that you have a special meeting, and you, you know, review it together and approve it together.
I like the idea of a subcommittee. Everybody else agree with that?
I am.
Well, so, I would respectfully decline and ask that the mayor who's, who put forth the charter city idea, and also the property transfer tax, be included on that subcommittee if she so chooses.
I'd be fine with that, too.
Yeah.
Okay.
Okay, we're done here.
Well, we just need to vote on the 6.2.
Transfer tax. Now, the transfer tax, it is, my understanding is that was also moved by Councilmember Davis and seconded by Councilmember Brinkman, correct?
Yes.
Okay, so, it's the same set of resolutions. The first is to place the transfer tax ordinance at the general election. Councilmember Brinkman.
Aye.
Councilmember Davis.
Aye.
Councilmember West.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Atkins.
Aye.
And Mayor Asher.
Aye.
The second resolution regarding the transfer tax, proposed transfer tax ordinance, is setting priorities for filing arguments, and also directing the city attorney to prepare an impartial analysis. Councilmember Brinkman.
Aye.
Councilmember Davis.
Aye.
Councilmember West, oh, sorry, West. Councilmember, Vice Mayor Atkins.
Aye.
And Mayor Asher.
Aye.
The third is providing for the filing of rebuttal arguments regarding the real property transfer tax ordinance. Councilmember Brinkman.
Aye.
Councilmember Davis.
Aye.
Councilmember West.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Atkins.
Aye.
And Mayor Asher.
Aye.
And the last is the resolution releasing rebuttal arguments regarding the real property transfer tax ordinance. Councilmember Brinkman.
Aye.
Councilmember Davis.
Aye.
Councilmember West.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Atkins.
Aye.
And Mayor Asher.
Aye.
Thank you very much.
Okay, on to item...